Okay, we're good.
No, it's yours.
We're live.
It's yours. We all got one.
Okay, we are live. Everybody ready?
Mm-hmm.
Good evening, everybody. I'd like to welcome everybody to the Committee of the Whole Meeting of the Village of Walton Hills this Tuesday, October 19th, 2021, at 7:05 PM. Roll call.
Councilwoman Allen?
Here.
Councilwoman Brenner Miller?
Here.
Councilwoman Linville?
Present.
Councilwoman Spitznagle?
Here.
Councilwoman Whedon?
Here.
Councilwoman Trolaski?
Here.
All of council present, along with our fiscal officer, Angela Rube, and our lawsuit sir, John Montello. Okay, we also do have Pat Hickey here tonight to talk about our casualty and liability insurance renewal. Before we do that, any comments related to the agenda items or any persons having business before council? Any questions on?
No, it would be a few seconds. We're on delay.
Okay.
Nothing yet.
That's fine. All right. And we will come back to that as we move on if anybody has anything. Okay, item four is discussion of casualty and liability insurance renewal with Pat Hickey of Love Insurance. We'll have Pat talk a little bit, and if we have any questions for Pat, we can ask him. Go ahead, Pat.
Well, two policies came up for renewal. I think I'll go the easy one first, and that's the cyber coverage. So your cyber policy, I did renew. Cyber premiums are up. Everybody's cyber premium is up. Your increase is smaller than what we see everybody else get. One of the biggest issues there, and I'd like to caution you about that a little bit because in the future it may make a difference in getting cyber coverage, is some of the carriers will not quote cyber coverage unless you have two-party authentication on all your systems.
Which we're installing. I'm working with the IT department now as they were filling out our paperwork to send back to Joyce. We're going to go ahead and implement that as well in our email and with the company that does our email.
We know of municipalities in the area that could not renew their cyber insurance because they didn't have two-party authentication. So that's a good thing and something you should need to be aware of. The property casualty insurance went up a little bit. That's the tough one. We've looked at it. We went to seven different markets, eight current carrier. Basically, you've had $211,000 over the last five years. You had a great year so far.
Yes.
But some of your claims or lawsuits that lag. So while we don't show any claims for this year, which is a good thing, we don't know if anything will come in. But the five-year picture is $211,000. Of that, $206,000 has already been paid. So it's not reserves. You've got 4,500 in reserves. It's money actually paid either on expenses or an us payout for the last five years. If you look at the premiums, your current premiums around, I'm going to round things off if you don't mind, $65,000. Had you paid $65,000 for the last five years, which you have not, you've paid lower than that, you would be at, interesting enough, a 65% loss ratio over five years. And that is a break-even position for an insurance company. They usually figure about 65% in losses and expenses, 35% in expenses. Okay, so you would be break-even. The current price is coming in at 74,000, under 75, and that underwrites the loss ratio around 55%. So that would be a five-year loss ratio at current premiums, and if losses continue like they are, you would still only be at 55%. Now, if you, in trying to market it, other carriers and new carriers will look at you, but they want a better than 55% loss ratio because that doesn't leave a big margin for anything else coming down the pike. So again, they're looking at the five-year loss ratios being a predictable loss ratio, which we hope that this year, coming year, is as good as the prior year. We get the worst of the year off the books because that'll disappear on your experience when they calculate your loss ratio, and you should be in a better position by next year.
Good.
Yeah, if we can keep going without the losses that we've had in the past. So I think in one respect, it's a fair premium if you look at loss ratios and you price according to loss ratio. The other side of the coin is still a big jump in what you've been paying.
And you mentioned you had seven different carriers.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, one of them said they'd be over $80,000, probably under 85, but over 80, that's not going to help.
Right.
Another one I talked to today, the last, we had two. One's still outstanding, but it's travelers and they almost never get back. So, but we talked to Right Risk Management today, and they looked at it, and they would have been about $80,000, too. And they figure quoted $80,000 isn't going to get the business with the incumbent, you know, around 75. So they deferred offering numbers, but they would have been at least 80. I don't think they would have been over 85. But even that's underwriting over 40% loss ratio.
Right.
You know, again, looking at five years and rolling that forward.
So that's kind of early. They like to see 35% loss ratio? Is that what you say?
20 to 35 is great.
Yeah, okay.
But if you, but if you take your premium losses and you back in .35 into that, your premium's going to go up.
Right.
So that's why I say I think it's a fair renewal in the sense that they didn't try to get you to that point. Had they tried to underwrite to 35% loss ratio, I think another carrier would have came in, but we'd be talking higher numbers, a lower than your current incumbent premium, but still higher than what they quoted you. So, you know, like I said, the good thing is so far no losses for this current policy year. If there's no losses that develop, that'll be good. We get to a good year next year. One year gets kicked out, it's going to give a lot better picture of the village to an insurance company. Yes.
Curiosity. You write a lot of these municipalities. Where do we fare with the loss ratio? I mean, are we above average? I figured as much.
But you know, it's, it's not like a lot of losses, but you've had three or four good lawsuits here.
Right.
And they've happened over a five-year period, so you didn't get them all in one year. So they, when you think, okay, you know, you had one year, just give me a second here and I'll show you what I mean. So if we, if we go backwards, starting at the fifth prior year, 189%, then 90%, then 28%, but then we bounce back from that with 96% and then have a good year. So if you look at it, you know, three of the last five years, they've lost money.
Sure.
And, you know, it goes back to the lawsuits that you had, and sometimes you can't avoid those. They, they're part of the business, but they do have an impact when you underwrite the premiums.
I know. I'm an insurance agent, so I know. I was just wondering where we measured in with most other municipalities.
I mean, I have municipalities with more claims by number, but they're bigger and you expect more things. But in terms of the size of the claims, we're into your sizes. Yeah.
Thank you.
The losses that I quoted are after deductibles. So if you really want to look at which two pictures, you had almost $20,000 in deductible payments over the last five years. So you put that on top of the 211, it comes out to about 231,000 total claims that the village has faced. With 211 paid by insurance, 25,000 deductibles and 110.
Any other questions for Pat?
Mr. Hickey? On the five-year sheet that you gave us?
Yes.
It's, there's two different lines. One says expenses paid and loss paid. Which one was the village responsible for? Or was that neither? Was that?
Okay. Insurance companies track expenses and losses. If you look in some years, expenses were higher than the losses. So their total loss picture is the addition of, you put them down and go across, but if you look where it says recovery, those are your deductible payments.
Okay, so that's what the village paid?
Yeah. And the deductible payments were netted out of the totals.
Thank you.
How does everybody feel? Do you think, Pat, I know when Angela talked to us the other day, she said, mentioned that you were waiting for two more people to come back.
Well, the one came back today.
Yeah.
As I explained. The other one is travelers. I wouldn't get my hopes up. Travelers has not given us a quote in the last 10 submissions.
Okay.
But we still pursue them because it's a possibility, and we'll continue to pursue, but I can't see travelers now getting involved. We've done enough with them. You know, they, they ask for submissions, but then they don't come through.
So your recommendation is to go with HCC, Public Risk Ohio, DBA, Tokyo Marine?
Yes.
Okay. How does everybody feel about that?
It's what we pay them to do.
Right.
Well, HCC's been here for about a long time.
Right. I'm fine with that.
Yeah.
And this is due November anyway, so.
Is everybody okay with, we can do first, for suspension?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
And what's our premium last year?
Around 65.
Yeah, 64.
Probably 64-something, I think.
Yeah, it's on that loss ratio page.
Let me find it here. I'll give you the exact number. Again, we're talking about property casualty premium. Was 64, 649.
That was in the body of the email that we wrote.
Mm-hmm.
It should be on that loss ratio page, too.
Yep, second call.
We had no claims on the cyber, correct?
No.
No claims on the cyber, no. If you had a claim on the cyber, you probably wouldn't get renewed.
Gotcha.
The, the number of extortion attacks are up almost as much as hacking for private, personally protected information. They're kind of caught up to that. That seems to be the biggest thing. Public entities are targets, and they're targets because the infrastructure, the IT infrastructure for a lot of public entities hurts, and they're easier targets than businesses. And so, you know, you can Google this. It's, they'll say the same thing I'm telling you. So you're in that target environment. The hackers are mostly European, okay? They don't always know what size the entity is. They just get in. And then they get in, get on your system, sit there for a while, try to get all your backups, and after about six months or so, then they start to take action. So they're slow getting it. The other thing that's driving the cyber prices, one of them is like the pipeline hack that happened, and that happened on one email, one email, one email password enabled somebody to get in that system and cause all the trouble. At least this is what we've been told. And somebody paid a big loss. And in May, the questionnaires for multi-factor authentication came out by July. Nobody was quoting renewals without that. It's eased up a little bit on smaller accounts like yours or for renewals. But we had some carriers, like travelers, walk away from renewals who didn't have MFA. So I suspect travelers had a good portion of that loss. You can kind of figure this out if you watch the industry. So they really, really tightened up. Microsoft Exchange had a big hack, too. And I forget whether it was the ones in the cloud or the ones that you host here, your email. One of those two programs was hacked, and then you had the LogMeIn hack, which a lot of people use to get on for IT work and things like that on your computer. So, you know, they've been some pretty good ones there that have caused some losses and, you know, enabled them to do things, you know, extortion and things like that.
Are you comfortable with our policy where it's at right now? Because I know.
You could consider an extra million limits on cyber. You know, a million. I don't know if you, I mean, I can't tell you want to be extorted for more than a million, but I think a million is probably okay. But it's one of those things that you can't say what the loss will be.
Right.
I mean, your property casualty, you have a 10 million umbrella, so you've got 1 million plus 10, you've got 11 million. You're on the top end in terms of what entities around here are caring for liability limits, so you're well protected there. Your buildings and contents should be fine. You know, you have the blanket policy, no co-insurance clause. You've got the Cadillac there. The cyber policy also includes some extra crime coverages that go up, like, let me see if I can find them here. Computer fraud, social engineering, and funds transfer fraud, they go up to 250,000 with your cyber coverage. So that's pretty good. Fund transfers, you know, if you're doing electronic fund transfers.
Right.
You know, they, there have been stories about viruses defeating third-party or two-party authentication, especially if you don't verify every transfer. So if one transfer goes through and you think it's all set up, check every single transfer, make sure it gets to where you sent it. Because once they get both facets of that, somehow somebody lost a lot of money that way. And there has been some fund transfer problems with one public entity and one church in the last couple of years, where the numbers were over a million dollars.
I think you shared that with us in our.
Yeah, we talked about that before.
Safety and Insurance Committee meeting. Anybody else have any questions for Pat?
Yeah, just had one question. Pat, is there anything proactively we can do, or anything else we need to do on the cyber side other than the two?
On the cyber?
Yeah.
At this point, cyber, to me, cyber sends a go in waves. Call them fads, all right? I don't know. But, you know, so they tackle a certain way, everybody protects it, then they try to figure out a new way. So once you get all your protections in place, you can protect what's been done, but not what's going to be coming. So that's hard to say what you need to do. I would say two-party identification on any, everything. You, peripherals attached to here, I mean, your public network's not what we're talking about, but the network in here and all the emails and everything else, two-party authentication. Anybody logs in from home or anywhere else, two-party authentication. It's a pain, but it's right now the best system to protect against, you know, getting hacked. The other thing is just don't click on emails.
Yeah.
You know, and be careful because they're coming through, they're coming on iPhones, text messages.
Yeah. From banks, from all kinds of things.
Yeah. I've started getting some that are spam on, and, you know, with really funny-looking URLs attached to them on text messages. So, you know, those are, you've just got to be careful and do the best you can. But clicking on, you know, human error probably creates the biggest issue or the biggest vulnerability. And so training, reminding employees, things like that, what to do, what not to do. We're limiting access only to those that need it. Obviously, the less that people or things that log in, you know, I mean, I'm not a good example of this. I can log in on my email with my iPad, my phone, a computer at home, my laptop, and, you know, that's not necessarily the best way to do things from the cyber perspective. So again, the, so, you know, I don't log, some of the things that I log in on my phone, I don't log in on my iPad. Okay, just to keep down that, those potentials. You know, you've got to be careful with printers if you have Bluetooth printers, okay? Somebody can drive by, connect Bluetooth on your printer, and use that as a way of getting into your network. That's what I mean by two-party authentication on everything. Anything that anybody can log into, you should have that. Copy machines, some copy machines with Bluetooth.
Yeah.
You use scanners, put your stuff in and it sends an email out, but it doesn't have to be connected to your network. It does it either wirelessly or by Bluetooth. So the more things and the easy becomes a carry transactions, the more you've got to make sure on the other hand, you're using the best protection that you can have. Best system protection, I guess, would be the way to say it.
Any other questions for Pat? Thank you, Pat.
You're welcome. Appreciate it.
I think we're good. Thank you for coming out.
You're welcome.
You're welcome to stay.
Thank you.
You have all this interest.
You always make those offers. Don't you take them?
Mary lives it every day.
Item five, that's item five. We have three, we have two resolutions and then an ordinance. The first one, A, is Resolution 2021-19, the City of Cleveland Police Radio Agreement. I know last week at our COW meeting, we had Shannon Cartier, our dispatch supervisor here, and she went through the agreement. I think everybody was pretty comfortable with that. Any questions on that? Or is everybody good with that?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to introduce that in the council meeting.
Okay, for suspension?
Yes, please.
Okay.
We've got the radios, starting to be used.
Any questions from residents?
No, not yet.
Any questions from anybody in the audience? Okay. We have item B, which is Resolution 2021, casualty and liability insurance renewal. We just went through that with Mr. Hickey, and I think everybody was pretty comfortable with that. And mentioned suspension. Who would like to introduce that? Mr. Whedon?
Yeah, do it.
And we'll, yeah, and we have an amendment.
Do that now? We're in the meeting.
No, we would do that at the time, right? John?
Sure.
Bray, do you, do you want?
He should, the old is in the packet, the new is what I have.
I did highlight, you would just, that's the new one. You got it? Okay, then just make an amendment, the, and read it in the records substitute. When we get to the resolution. Okay, now, the next item. Item C is notes. It's ordinance 2021-17, notes refunding. I'll have Angela talk about that, and then we can get it. I did invite, and I know the Infrastructure Committee had a meeting this afternoon and did ask Joe to come back in case anybody has any questions. So Mr. Gelati is here tonight as our village engineer. Angela, just want to talk about what this piece of legislation is versus that it is separate from any new money that we could talk about next week and if we have legislation at that time.
I'm going to unshort you. I don't know when I did that, but.
Well, I'll be okay.
Okay, so pass those to the council people then, if you would.
All right, so the refunding note, we discussed a little bit last week. Each year, we pay down on our old notes. So what I'm handing you now is our project schedule as we've had it. It's from, this shows from 2018 forward. So a couple of our projects, like traffic signals and road construction, go back to '15, traffic signals, 2009, and building acquisition, which was the event center in 2016. Bricker and Eckler prepares this for me and keeps it, keeps it going each year because I do use them as bond counsel, or we have been at least for the last several years. So this shows you the maximum maturity on the notes and basically gives you an idea from year to year of what's been paid down. So last year, when we refinanced, so to speak, our notes in 2020, we had paid down $200,000 total on all, the combined of all of them. Paid 75 on traffic signals because the prior year we hadn't paid any. Paid 50 on road construction because we only paid 25 prior, you know, so we try to play a little catch-up. So this year, the amount that I'm going to refund, so to speak, I'm going to pay down 105,000. The minimum I could pay on the building was 35,000, so we're going to pay 35 on the building, 15 on traffic signals, 35 on road construction, and 20 on the other traffic signals from 2015. So that I will be refunding $1,190,000. Now, in addition, in this legislation, because the Dunham Road Project we funded last year at 2.6 million, we're rolling that into this note just in case our money from the county does not hit us before November 16th, let's say, when it is time to pay these back. So the purpose of keeping that rolled in tonight and passing it is so we don't have to come back and revisit it should that happen. I anticipate, based on our recent updates, to have that check early next week. So that means we will agree that we're going to pass in the amount of $3,790 to cover us in case the money's not here yet to pay back on Dunham. Should the money pay back, then when we're actually only going to go out for the $1,190,000 on the refunding amounts. Because the Dunham Project note was specific to the Dunham Project, and the project is complete, that needs to be paid back in its entirety at some point anyway. The easiest way to do that, obviously, is to pay it ahead of time and not even take it in refunding. So that's the goal. But in the off shot that the mail system fails us and I don't get that check when it's time to send payment over for these in a couple of weeks, then we're covered.
Quick question. So the amount that we are, that we are anticipating from the county is how much?
1.98. One, one, yeah, right, Joe? 1, 1,000, uh?
1.908.
908, sorry. Thank you.
So, so paying the whole amount, 2,600,000, the other seven comes from the village?
Right, that's our, our portion was seven and change. Might have even come in a little lower, but we haven't finished up final payment. I am still, I have a couple of payments coming in from Maple Heights that are not exorbitant, but those are getting issued this week as well.
Can you repeat that?
Couple of payments still due to me from Maple Heights.
Money they owe us, Maple Heights.
Yeah, exactly, from them being invoiced as us being the lead on the project. So when we are finished with all of that, I can, Joe and/or I can give you the final figure on what our out-of-pocket was on the project.
Yeah, I have another question. The WAM, could you explain what that is on this sheet?
On the refunding sheet?
Yeah.
Yeah. You're on the refunding project. I honestly, I'm not even going to be able to give you an answer on the WAM. I should know what the acronym is. It's something to do with the maturity. I would guess that that's going to be your final payment.
So is that saying if we were to take the initial 275?
I'm just looking to see, I'm just looking to see. It might even have to do with your ability to borrow. I will look up that acronym for you.
So, what, I'm looking at this, Mayor?
Yes.
I'm looking at what was just passed out, and I'm trying to figure it out. So, if we just take the traffic signals, the 2018 amount, 275...
That's what we were, that's what we owed at the end of 18, so we had already done a note.
Oh, so this is what we owe at the end of these years.
This is what we owed at the end of 18.
Okay.
Next one, at the end of 19, same thing, we didn't pay down anything on it. So, at the end of 2021, once I pay 20,000 on that top line, we're going to owe 180. We're going from 200 to 180, because I'm paying down 120, I'm paying down 20. Okay, so your weighted average maturity, that's your, that's your WAM, weighted average maturity. So, it's multiplied by the years until maturity. So, if you ran this note out for all these years, that's going, that's going to be your maturity on the note.
So, so the $3.8 million in that first column there, that matures, final maturity of notes, 12, 1 of 35.
Mm-hmm.
Are you saying that...
The higher the WAM, the longer it takes for the holdings in the portfolio to mature. So, basically, your notes going out each year, like we have to go find someone to purchase our notes, because we do refund ours each year, nothing we have is super long-term.
Uh...
It's a behind-the-scenes more finance in, in maturity of the actual portfolio of the notes.
That's not saying, like, if you take out a loan, let's say you take out a car loan, and they give you paperwork, and they say, "At the end of this loan, if you don't pay it off early, this is how much you're going to pay total for this loan." Is that what that's telling us?
No, that's not, that's not what that's telling you. But if you, if you looked out the traffic signals from '09, you see how much less that, that maturity is, because you have less time to pay it off. We're going to get to it in 2029, or sooner, depending on how much we would pay, versus 2035 on the top one.
Okay, so...
It's basically giving you, it's more for the investors in the portfolio. It's really not for us to look at, that's for the investors to look at. It's a weight of the securities maturity based on the portfolio value at this point in time. It, it's not a number, it's not a number that has anything to do with what we're paying back.
Angela, go ahead.
I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
I'm just trying to get this in my mind, we'll leave that alone. The 1.19, $1,190,000, that's what we're going to roll over.
That's the total of what we're rolling over, so to speak, renewing, rolling over, refunding, whatever you want.
Adding Dunham Road to it, add, increases it to 3.790.
Correct, keeping Dunham in.
And when we get paid the money from Dunham Road, from the county, you're going to pay that off right away.
Yes, that gets paid off immediately.
But our money that, that we owe is going to be rolled over into, into something else.
We're, we're essentially paying, yes and no. Because Dunham's going to be done and over with, you're not going to see Dunham sitting out here like you see road construction 2015.
Correct, but we still are...
It'll be wiped off the sheet. So, our portion that's due, we're paying, period, end, done.
How are we paying it? With what money?
We're paying it because it was included in this amount when we took the note for 2.6.
So, we're paying it through the note?
Correct, through the note.
But we, the note is not paid off.
Correct.
The note itself is not paid off.
Correct.
Dunham Road is paid off, but not the note.
The note, yeah, correct.
That's what I want to get at, and I want to make absolutely clear. It's like, sorry, I got to go simple here.
No, you're fine.
Buying a car, you know? You take out a loan for the car, the, the car company's paid off, but you still own, you still owe the money on the car, which you're paying on, which we will pay for Dunham Road through the notes.
Right.
Okay.
Through the new notes, or...
Not through anything new, no, don't, don't confuse it. There's, there's nothing new coming.
Or renewed.
Through the renewed, correct, through the renewed, yes.
Gotcha.
I, I think one of the questions that came out of infrastructure, correct, okay, what, one of the questions was, what is the minimum amount we have to pay there a year? Is there any certain, wasn't there a question?
That I have to get from you from Catherine, which she would have gone after your meeting, so...
Okay.
Like, I had, my minimum I had to pay on the building, I was going to pay a little bit less, I had to pay 35,000 at least on the building. Now, that could vary from year to year, because like, we got the building, the first year, we only paid 10.
Right.
So, you know what I'm saying, in years that you're going to short it, the next year, you're going to play catch-up a little bit.
Because it's based on the whole note.
Right, so it's based on the whole note, or based on each, you know, the whole amount of that note and, and your, your maturity.
So, that was a question.
It's going to be different for each component of the note, let's put it that way, so I can get you that info on what our bare minimums are. I'm going conservative this year, because we paid a lot last year.
Okay.
Angela, is...
And knowing we were paid a ton for Dunham, so...
Is that amount based on a percentage, or is it a percentage based on the size of the note?
It could be a percentage, probably based on the size of the note, if I had to guess. Mm-hmm, and the maturity of it, right? So, if I have a note going to 35, I can't keep passing on it and not paying every year,
Any questions related to that? I guess here, here's the, just so we can, I know we have that piece of legislation, that piece of legislation, we have to pass, okay? That, that is, well, you don't have to pass anything, but it's basically almost like a housekeeping...
Pricing ha, pricing happens on November 3rd, so our pricing call will be on November 3rd, just to guarantee what our part will be on our note, on the note, on refunding. So, it's a timing issue.
No, no, I understand that.
Yeah, yeah, no, I'm just letting them know.
Right, but I'm talking about if, if we, I know there's going to be some discussion right after this, before this meeting adjourns about, and we started it last week, about whether or not we wanted to allocate any new money. But I just wanted to let, no, we could, we could pass this part tonight, but we don't pass this tonight, this is the minimum we have to pass this year, because this is, you know, renewing our, our, our note, rolling it, rolling it over, basically, yeah, refinancing it. So, I would ask that we, for suspension, pass it tonight, and then next week, we just have, just to focus on whether or not we want to allocate any money, and talk about that, but it's up to council.
I have a question on that?
Yes.
Without throwing a monkey wrench in it, it's probably something that Mr. Montelef can answer. I don't have a problem passing it tonight, if we pass it tonight, and then next week decide to add more money...
Not, this has nothing to do with that. Any other money's going to be a new money, new legislation, all separate.
Separate legislation.
This is strictly refunding.
That's one thing I didn't say, that's what I meant to say, yeah, separate legislation anyways.
Right.
Even if we were adding new money tonight, we'd have two pieces of legislation.
You still would have had more, exactly. You refund your originals, and then you get a separate legislation, anything new, even if you're going to roll it in when the payment comes in.
I'll introduce this tonight.
Well, let's make sure, I want to make sure, Pat, because otherwise, you go, I, I get it, first reading it, and then pass it next week, but I don't see no difference. I mean, this is something we have to...
Right, I was going to ask if the, you know, if we would have, if we passed it tonight, if we would then have to amend this, but that's not...
No, the only thing that will change is that we're covering that larger amount, and I can say, "Hey, we got our check, so just FYI, we're going to take under what you approved,"
Very good.
"Because we won't need to..." Yeah. Yep.
How does everybody feel about passing that on suspension?
I'm fine.
Jennifer?
Yeah, one last question.
Yeah.
Angela, are those payment amounts what you had originally in the budget?
Um, yes and no. I don't, I kind of go through at the end of the year to do this piece, so...
I'm just curious, if we were anticipating a higher amount to go for...
Yeah, I don't know, I'd have to look through the budget and, and let you know. I don't, it would, would have probably been higher, if anything.
Okay. That's why I asked, because I figured if you were paying a little less this year, you were doing that on my very reasons.
If not, I got it on my desk somewhere.
To keep us...
I can run and grab it in between.
In the black.
Mm-hmm, yeah, I feel, I feel like I'm giving them...
Do you need her to grab that, Jennifer?
I have...
You got, got yours?
I have, I have here, if that's...
Here, pass that, if you don't mind. Thank you.
There was, I mentioned, because it has to be done, and it just would get it rolling.
I mean, we knew we needed to pay Dunham, so that's in the budget for sure. Okay. So, yeah, that, um, we should be good, because I had 2.6 in the budget for Dunham, plus another So, I'm paying a little, a little bit less. I'm paying down a little bit less than what was in the budget.
Yeah, so we're paying 105,000 instead.
Right.
Okay. Yeah, yeah, otherwise, I'm...
Yeah, we paid so much last year, I figured, let's go a little more conservative.
Councilman Linville, you good on that piece of legislation, too?
Yes.
Good. Brian?
Yes, sir.
Bray, Gloria, good.
As long as it's what we need to do, and it keeps us in the black, too.
I'm not paying anymore than the budget, but a little bit of that.
Any, any questions from residents?
Um, yeah, so Lee Nielsen said, "Is there an expectation of the elected officials to respond to citizen calls and emails? Is there an agreed-upon turnaround time for commun, such communications?" I know that was not necessarily related to this, but it came in in-between stuff, so I apologize.
Um, Lee, we'll, we can answer that under other business. I can, I can answer that. Okay, and we're going to ask for suspension of item B.
That's item C.
That's C.
That was item C, okay.
Bray was item D.
Now, I know we're, we're talking about having another meeting next week, and that would be, is that true, or we wanted to discuss increasing this note?
And not this one.
Well, not this one, but we would have legislation for another note, to increase our, our debt. For what we talked about last week, the roof, we already got the horseshoe's already in there, correct? We got the road program in there, right?
Nothing's in what you're looking at now.
So, then it would be the road program, so it'd be the 400,000 for...
Right.
The 2022 road program.
New bounty notes.
And then, uh, we, there's the roof, and I know this afternoon in the Infrastructure Committee, you talked about other roads, too, correct? Or, go ahead, I'll let the, I'll refer to the, the, the committee.
Well, Chairman Linville, if you don't mind...
I'm sorry?
If you don't mind, I'll, I'll, I'll talk.
Relating to the meeting today.
Do you mind if Ray talks about it?
Sure, I guess he can talk, huh?
Yeah, thank you, thank you, Chairman Linville. Just wanted to, for members of council and, and our residents, and all who are viewing, Mr. Gelati's here somewhere.
Thank you.
Uh, yeah, just to kind of bring you up to date, we, the, the Infrastructure Committee did meet this afternoon to discuss two items in particular, in particular, the, the status of Cleveland Water Department grants for water main replacements. And it's clear now from Mr. Gelati that Walton Hills has been successful with an application to replace the water main on Tulip Lane. Previous, uh, previous attempts to gain funding for Hickory and Chestnut, as we're, we have not been successful in that area. So, the water main replacements for Hickory and Chestnut are no longer part of the equation. So, we spent a lot of time discussing the validity, or whether, you know, the pros and cons of moving forward with paving the horseshoe without those other water main replacements going into effect. Similarly, conversation around rotary and Connolly Drive. We, we, the village has been successful in getting a grant for rotary drive, but not for Connolly Drive, so that'll be coming up in another future year, 2023, I believe it is. So, at the end of the day, the committee, and, and, and we didn't make a formal recommendation, because we still had other questions for our fiscal officer, as it related to Walton Hills' ability to repay if we were to bring on additional, additional projects. But we did agree, in theory, to move forward with the water main replacement project, which is grant-funded for Tulip Lane. No water main replacements for Hickory or Chestnut, because if we did that, that would be out of our pocket. But trusting Mr. Gelati's engineering expertise, that it would be safe to go ahead and repay the entire horseshoe, although we may still have those water main, some water main concerns. We wanted to move forward with that project. What, the, the other item that was brought to the table was the roof on this building, as well as potentially moving Barclay Estates up into the, moving up a year on the repaving schedule. And that's where we, we didn't make a formal recommendation there, because we wanted to have more dialogue with our fiscal officer on the ability for Walton Hills to be able to repay additional debt. And one of the documents that our fiscal officer, Angela Rube, shared with us, OMAP, is that the program?
Right, the Ohio Market Access Program, that gives us a credit rating when we go out for our notes.
And, and right now, it appears that that credit rating is good, and the interest rate is...
Lower.
Lower, and we don't know what it will be in the future. So, those are some of the things we wanted to kind of hear from Angela, as, you know, whether or not it would be more prudent to, although nobody likes debt, I don't, nobody likes debt. Would it be more prudent if we, we, if we're, if we're going to stick with our road program, which is what our committee is firmly recommending, that we are at a point in the life and history of Walton Hills, that it is vitally important that we do continue our road program? And when I say road program, I'm particularly talking about our secondary roads, those roads that we don't get grant funding for, that Walton Hills, we're at that point where we really need to lock in and, and find a way, it's like we find a way to pay for the, our, our portion of Dunham Road, you know, 700,000, right? We have to, we have to find ways to pay for these other non-grant-funded roads and get our roads repaired. They're deteriorating before our very eyes, and in some cases, have, have become safety, safety, safety issues, so. I don't know, Mr. Gelati, if it's, if this is your time to come up and, and share, but again, we talked about the pros and cons, is it, you know, which way we should go, and Mr. Gelati had, you know, he gave us his engineering perspective recommendation.
Step forward if you need. Hello, everybody?
Hello.
Um, yeah, Mr. Whedon, I think that was a pretty good summary of our meeting, I thought it was a really good meeting this afternoon. You folks that were here, I, I think you would agree. Yeah, so you've got the plan, you've got the recommendation from me. So, that's it, but you summed it up pretty well, I thought, so.
Uh, Mr. May?
Yes, go ahead.
Yeah, as, as we, Councilman Whedon just stated, refer man, engineering aspect of the plan, what we would like, and, and if we're going to discuss this next weekend, what I particularly would like to see, is, is talking about the debt, and how much debt we can take on, and Angela already put some of this stuff down, is how much, what, if we do these projects, individually or collectively, how much debt is that going to add on in terms of a payment per year that we're going to have to pay back in the budget? And what is the minimum amount we can pay, that we would have to pay in order to, to not go bad on our debt? Also, I'd like to know what the, and I know there's some sort of formula, but what the maximum amount of debt this village can occur, incur? I know there's a formula based on, you know, how much money you have in the bank and other, other factors.
We're currently at 2.93 out of our 10 million certificate, because your debt is based on what the county certifies you for.
Okay.
So, we have not hit our debt capacity yet.
The debt capacity is 2.93?
2.93 is where we're at, out of our 10 million certified resources, okay, out of our 10 million that we could go up to.
So, we could go up to 10 million in debt?
Um, I, I would say, yes.
Okay. So, what I would like to know, just for myself, for next week, is adding on these projects, how much that's going to add to the budget every year, and what the minimum amount is that we could pay every year?
Sure, so I will get...
Based on, you know, the interest rates, current interest rates.
Based on what you would take if you're going to do it right now, with OMAP credit rating in conjunction with the other money, so to speak, because obviously, we get the best bang for our buck on interest rates, on the, the power and the yield for the money itself, as well as on our financing costs for it. I'll get those figures. If I had to estimate, just based on other projects we've done, I would say you're going to be looking at adding probably another 75,000 in payments at a minimum...
Per year.
Per year. Yeah.
Okay.
So, that would mean, just on that, our pay down would have to be 75, in addition to the other potential 100,000, you know what I'm saying? So, yeah.
Mr. Mayor? So, Angela, the 800,000 extra that is being talked about...
Well, wait, I'm giving you 75 as a figure if you add Barclay. Are you talking about adding Barclay?
I'm just talking about adding...
Just the two we talked about?
These other projects, the horseshoe, and the roof, and Barclay.
Right, so including Barclay would be more money than what I've talked about last week? Okay.
But, so what I'm asking is, the 800,000 that you had... But, so what I'm asking is the eight hundred thousand that you had estimated was the roof?
Four for the roof.
Right, for half of that for the roof, and where is the other four hundred thousand?
Four is the road program.
The horseshoe.
Without, it, it's more than just the horseshoe.
No, I know.
The horseshoe's two fifty-seven.
No, I know, it's in the two tw-.
There's other.
Twenty-twenty-two road program.
Okay.
Correct.
The horseshoe's the big chunk.
The horseshoe's the big chunk.
That's what I was asking, because the road program is less than, it's, it's slightly less.
It's slightly less, it was three sixty-two, three hundred and sixty-two thousand. I cushioned it a little bit, so obviously I can even tweak the number instead of cushioning that. We can add in Barclay and just go with our minimum that we think we need.
The horseshoe's two fifty-seven out of the three sixty-two.
Right.
Correct.
Yeah, no, I just wanted to, for clarification, that that's what we were talking about?
That was the original four.
The twenty-two road program.
So that in itself would have been its own piece of legislation to cover what's on the sheets I gave you last week as far as repair as well as repaving projects, okay? And I kept it at a little bit broader scope. So that if we came under on any one of those, we may be able to send the money to something, you know, another road if we need to, okay? Not as specific as Dunham Road project. Roof would be obviously specific to the roof here at Village Hall. Should you decide to add money for Barclay, that's going to be a third piece of legislation, I do believe. Um, if not, we would have to amend the legislation that's already been drafted with Brickeren Ackler for the roads. If not, it would have its own.
And the roads, would they be a twenty-year?
Yes.
Uh, and the, the roof would go, what, what would the roof be?
Uh, whatever useful life would be, I think, is probably about the same as maturity. So I'm going to guess both are going to be at twenty. Most of ours are at twenty, so most of our numbers are at twenty.
Okay, it, it would help me a lot if we could add, I'm sure the rest of us
It's again going to be one of those things though where they're not going to have an exact figure, probably, but
Right, but, but round about, I mean, it's top of my head right now.
I'm going to say seventy-five thousand additional payments.
If we're saying seventy-five thousand, we're going to have to trim that somehow because if we're, if we're only good in the black forty-two or whatever we are.
Well, I did budget, I'm paying less than I budgeted this year, so.
Yeah, so even if we run it up to fifty thousand, so we got to come up with, you know, we're just going to have to look at the entire budget and see how it fits in, uh, the entire budget.
Right, Mr. Mayor, just so the residents know what we're talking about, the twenty-two, uh, road projects that is highly suggested by our village engineer, Mr. Gelati, would be crack sealing Jefferson, Somerset, Delwood, and McClellan. Um, it would be paved, no, no pavement markings. County road ma- maintenance on Dunham, Walton, Egbert, Savamore, Alexander with miscellaneous crack seals, spot repairs, and striping. Um, that would include the asphalt resurfacing for Alexander Road. That would be Hickory, Tulip, Chestnut resurfacing. Hanon and Crick Industrial Parkway's concrete that needs to be repaired. And a culvert replacement on South Meadow Park along with the water main replacement on Tulip Lane. So those are the projects we're specifically talking about, for the four hundred thousand.
Those are the projects, and the reason you see all those projects at four hundred is because some of those projects have grant funding coming in also. So our cost is not full on for them, or our cost is not zero in that grant list, but that horseshoe, again, being the big project because the paving needs to be paid for in its entirety by the village, two hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars roughly.
And in the meeting earlier today, um, when I asked Mr. Gelati, because some streets have been kind of moved around on the project, and he was doing that to try to keep a normalized budget each year.
Correct.
So that's why some things have been moved around.
Pretty much, you, you take the five-year road program, and I, and I know Angela, you've been throwing that number out there. Um, the engineer and, and the committee and all of us really here, it's kind of spaced out and, and, well, I know you and Joe worked on it, well, anywhere from four hundred thousand, six hundred thousand, so on an average, about five hundred thousand dollars a year if we stayed with the, the program, um, over the next five years. So five hundred thousand would be the average. Some years, um, if you look at twenty twenty-four, it's four thirty-five. You know, uh, we got a little more. And some of the other years, five forty-seven in twenty-five. Twenty-three, which is the following year, what we're talking about, is six sixty-seven. So if we're, we're committed to staying with the program, then what's important is, I think, uh, when we talk about it next week is, you know, how we feel, I mean, it's always a gamble what your interest rate is now versus what it could be next year.
Correct.
But the way things are forecasting, it doesn't look like they're going to be less. There's a good chance they're going to be more, so it's just something to think about, just, uh, and then we have the road, so.
We do have, we do have
If you think of anything else.
We do have a comment from, uh, Bowbury Jefferson. Please add Barclay to the twenty-two road program and not keep pushing it around.
Barclay actually got bumped up, didn't it?
Um.
To twenty-three?
Well.
Twenty, twenty-four originally?
You know, and I, I don't have any of the old doc, uh, there.
Yes.
I don't have any of the old documents in front of me, but, um, you know, I'm thankful, I'm thankful that tonight, this council is talking about committing to this five-year program. Um, because, you know, the, a lot of these projects that are on there, whether it's the horseshoe, Barclay, Fern, Logan, uh, we've seen these projects before. We've seen these on other lists. And, uh, councilhead, we have not been in a position to even really try to make that commitment. Um, so it, it's been, all of these projects have been pushed back a year. You know, like, again, as I said earlier, it's, it's kind of like that, uh, Cleveland Browns thing or Indians, wait till next year kind of a thing. And they have, we have continuously pushed back. Now, I do want to say, um, that, um, I was not part of council, uh, four years ago when some difficult decisions were made that I believe helped to get us to this position that we can even talk about committing to a long-term road program. And, and, and of course, the inside village piece that was done, the, um, uh, garbage fees that our residents now pay, those are dollars that came, and no longer had to come out of the village budget as well as the sewer maintenance. So sacrifices were made in a lot of areas, both of our residents as well as the departments in running leaner and meaner over the last few years. And, and we're finally at that position, so, yeah, some things have, a lot of things have, a lot of things on this list have gotten pushed back and moved around. But I think what's most important is that we are committing to it right now to say, hey, look, we have this five-year program. We need to stick with, find, if we can find seven hundred thousand to pay for Dunham in twenty twenty-one, we, you know, certainly we can, we have to find ways to pay for our, our, our entire road program, so. That, that's what I want to say, is that we, I'm just thankful we're, we can have a valid discussion about, uh, uh, moving these projects and whether or not it's more advantageous to take interest or take loans, a larger lump of money right now than, than, you know, versus next year. This is a good discussion, this is a good place for us to be. It's a good place for us to be. We were not in this position four years ago.
Thank you, Mr. Whedon, I, I guess, and you know, and to the residents, especially to some of the newer residents, you know, being on this body a long time, along with some of the other council members, um, you know, we were asked to balance the budget, which is always our job, but it's, it, it's very hard to do that when you have, your expenses are exceeding your revenues based on the economy. Not based on anything we're doing, but based on, on businesses. We lost two large businesses, not by anybody's fault here or a- anything, just, um, one basically just closed all their plants, which is the Ford plant, closed all their plants and consolidated. And then our house, we just didn't have the room for expansion. Um, we've done a pretty good job over the last, maybe even six years or so to maintain the businesses we have, which is a very, very important thing. And this body here just extended that with, we're hoping, we're not hoping, but we know what's going to happen with the expansion of Smith and Obie, and hopefully we'll have some good news before the end of the year. But with that said, we all pulled together and the residents, a lot of things didn't happen on the infrastructure side, no different than even in, in our service department to do that. But as Mr. Whedon said, we're kind of, we're, we're getting to that point. We still have to kind of still balance both. So I think our discussion next week is, is very important. Because what we've been saying is, we understand our infrastructure's getting to the point. You know, we've held back, that now we might have to loosen the purse strings a little bit to spend that money, uh, just depending, but we, we've still got to be smart about it. Um, because we don't know, uh, what lies ahead. Um, I feel we're going in a good direction. So I think our discussion, I would agree with Mr. Whedon and everybody here, I think our discussion next week on, on what to do with input from Angela, Joe, and, uh, our other department heads, I think we'll come to a good conclusion. Come to a good compromise and decide what to do.
We do.
I, I, I think, you know, well, well, let's, let's see what happens.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes. Go ahead.
Well, uh, one of the things I wanted to add is that, you know, we were in the red for a few years and it was our primary goal to get back into the black. And it was not for the, um, the not wanting to do any of this, but you have, when you have a household, you have priorities. I mean, are you going to get a new car or are you going to fix your car? If, you know, you only have so much money to work with. So it was certainly never our intention to put this off until a crisis moment. It was, we were dealt certain situations and we've been working at them the best we can. So as Mr. Whedon said, we're at an opportunity point here where we can now at least have a legitimate conversation to see how far we can take it if we so desire to do so. But it certainly was never for not wanting to repair the roads. We all drive them, we all live here, and, um, we all know there can be improvements, so, for what it's worth.
Hey, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
And what came up in the, in the meeting today too, uh, and nobody's advocating for this, nobody's, this isn't even on the table for discussion at this point, but, uh, other municipalities, they assess the people on the street for street repairs. Bedford does it all the time. They fix a sidewalk in front of your house, you get assessed. Uh, and that's how they pay, pay for their programs. Where, that's not even on the table here for discussion. So, you know, we're, we're trying to, we're working with what we have.
Right.
Trying to move things around and trying to be creative as much as we can and as, um, much as Angela allows us to do, um, without incurring any, you know, any, uh, residence, and we are all residents. Nobody wants to pay more taxes. We're trying to do it within that, those confines. And, uh, as Councilman Whedon says, we are to the point where we can at least have a concerted discussion about this stuff. And, and, because two years ago, we weren't in this position at all to do this. So, uh, we're just thankful that, that we can at least have the discussion. And, uh, you know, I think, I fully believe in my heart that we can figure something out here next week and, and do something. What that is, I don't know, but we can do something and move it along a little bit.
I do have a, a listener viewer comment from Catherine Spitznagel. How long is it projected for the Dunham Road loan to last and pay on? Um, Catherine, that loan is to, it's going to be paid off. So as soon as we get our check from the county, that loan is going to be off the books.
But it's going to be on our?
It, it, it's in what's already getting refunded, but the two six goes away.
It goes, yeah, yeah, it goes away, but our seven hundred thousand is still in the, um,
The note?
The note.
No.
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 It will be reduced.
It'll be reduced, yeah.
So, hey, so did you were asking?
Yeah, no, sorry, yeah, no, we're paying everything.
I'm still unclear there, too.
We're budgeted to pay what we owed on the project, plus the note on the project.
So, so seven hundred thousand is coming out of Walton Hill.
Correct.
Okay, alright.
Because we, we took a little extra initially so we'd have that seven hundred and pay for Breezy along the way, or whatever contractor we were going to be using. But it's all going back, done. That will be off the books.
You know, the thing we really, and it, I'm going to put a little positivist spin, what we've done good compared to a lot of communities, we have kept our main roads, we've, we've done very good in getting grants. This village has done very well. Um, and, and that's from our department along with Sugar Valley Engineering. Most of the grants that we applied for that are out there through the county or through the state, we do receive. So the roads that the majority, or almost all the village drives on at a higher speed, we've done a great job. Our main roads are some of the best in the area. There's, there's just no doubt. Um, just to put a little positivist spin, there's some communities that are struggling, not only with their second roads, but they don't have their primary roads, um, completed either. They, they, um, they, they struggle, um, in both areas. And so we are very fortunate now, we can focus on our secondary roads. Our main roads are in pretty good shape. They're, they're, Joe, wouldn't you say that's pretty true? We, we tackled one of the biggest one years ago, Sagamore Road. We tackled Egbert. We tackled, we're just about complete with Walton. We get, uh, that Dunham Road. Those are roads that haven't been done in twenty-something years. Big roads that have been done over the last ten years, or eight years. Um, and some of them took a lot to do. Sagamore was a good example of that. Not easy to bring communities together. So, um, go ahead, Brian, do you have something?
No.
Otherwise, we'll move forward till next week.
Yeah, move forward, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Any, I know any other questions related to this?
I have a question.
Go ahead. Go ahead, Laura. Then we'll get you.
I'm confused with the, we call it the horseshoe, which is Tulip, Hickory, and Chestnut. I thought Cleveland, we, uh, turned our water lines over to Cleveland. Correct. And what is the problem in the horseshoe? The water lines are breaking?
Uh, Joe, why don't you come up and you can help address that, otherwise I'll address it.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. How you doing? Um, yes, so as, uh, Mr. Whedon and some others indicated uh, in the committee meeting earlier this afternoon, the water main replacement for Tulip Lane, uh, has been funded through a grant, hundred percent grant, uh, through Cleveland Water Department. Hickory and Chestnut, the replacement of those water mains is not funded, okay? Uh, to your point, yes, uh, the village turned the water system, the water mains, over to Cleveland Water about a decade ago, you're right about that. Uh, but the way the grant funding program works is, if we receive the grant, the village receives the grant, then the village, um, we do the project. We prepare the plans, we bid the project out through the usual public bidding, competitive bidding process, and we administer the construction, and all of that is paid for by Cleveland Water. So it's, uh, the, the question came up this afternoon, it will not be Cleveland Water in their white trucks with the little blue lettering on the side performing in the work, it'd be the contractor that the village hires, um, under our guidance, but all paid for by Cleveland Water. Hopefully that clears it up.
Well, they're going to do Tulip.
Correct.
Okay. Um, and yet the problem is still with Hickory and Chestnut.
Yes, so again, that came up, uh, earlier today as well. Uh, one of the, the biggest parts of the grant funding program basically boils down to how many water main breaks you've had on that road. Uh, that's the, the biggest part of the scoring system, if you will. Uh, so we've had many water main breaks on Tulip Lane, hence the reason we were able to score high enough, secure the grant to replace it. Uh, there haven't been as many water main breaks on either Hickory or Chestnut, hence the reason that, um, neither of those roads score high enough to receive the grant funding, so.
It has nothing to do with the Tulip is the smaller of the three streets?
No.
So you're saying the scoring goes according to the breakage?
It go, yeah, there's, there's several categories in there. Um, I don't want to bore everybody with all the details. Um, but the, the biggest part of the scoring system is the number of breaks on that road.
What would it cost to fix all three?
Well, if it's, I think, a hundred and forty-seven, uh, for Tulip, I'm
One forty-seven.
Yeah, so I, it's probably half a million dollars to do the other two roads combined. Yeah, so it's probably half a million dollars to do the other two roads combined. So, you know, I certainly would not recommend we do that.
So you're recommending that we just do Tulip?
Correct.
Because we're getting, but then if these do have breaks, then all the work that's been done is going to have to be redone?
All the work, you mean the paving work?
Yeah.
Um, yeah, yes and no. That topic came up today also, so I'm glad you asked. A couple of things. First of all, every road that we pave, there is some risk that the water main or some other utility under the road could break at any time, and some utility company would have to come fix it. So that risk exists with every project we do. Also, again, this came up this afternoon on Hickory and Chestnut, there are not as many breaks as there were on Tulip, so, you know, I think Tulip was the hotspot, I guess, if you will. So that's out there. And also, you know, we discussed, and it happens all over the village, and we have water main breaks unfortunately all the time. Many times, the water main is actually in the grass or the tree lawn area, so the water department can simply repair the break, and they never disturb our asphalt pavement. So it's not as if every break causes a giant hole in the asphalt pavement, so.
Thank you, Joe.
Sure.
Thank you.
And Joe, as you said earlier today, if the asphalt does have to be disturbed, sometimes it's just a small area, like right in front of Mrs. Munnies, that needed to be replaced and that. So it's not anything where the whole road needs to be dug up.
Correct. And we get reimbursed for that cost anyway, so there's no cost out of the village's pocket if that situation even occurs, correct?
And then at a point, I think you were getting to Gloria, even though we turn the water lines, they can, they can say, okay, we're just gonna keep fixing it. There's no, nothing that says after so many breaks, they, you know, we have to, they have to replace it, or, then what they do without the grant, and Joe, this comes to where these come from, they look at it, the repairs start to exceed what it would cost, then that changes how they look at it, too. Okay, so any other, any other things related to that? Okay, so item C, we've already done that. Any other business? I'll answer any questions in a second here, but any other new business? Okay? Any other questions related to water mains or anything like that? Okay. What did Lee Nielsen, what was her question?
Lee Nielsen's question was, is there an expectation of the elected officials to respond to citizen calls and emails? Is there an agreed-upon turnaround time for such communications? And she said, thank you.
Well, anybody want to answer that, or?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I will say I try to get back to the residents as soon as possible. Sometimes with my work schedule, if it's a 12-hour day, I'm actually gone closer to 14 hours, and if I'm working a couple of days in a row, it may take a few days for me to get back to the resident. And I've expressed this to residents when that's happened. Otherwise, I do try to respond to them immediately.
Okay, I could answer myself when it comes to emails, and I'll answer myself if it comes to any call. I myself like calling people, I like talking to people personally. My experiences with emails is they get distributed, they get, if you notice, my emails are very short, because interpretation is in the eye and the hand of the holder. In my position as mayor, I have to be very careful with that. I wanna be fair, I want people, when I do communicate, to understand me and know what I'm communicating. I think to date, I think the only one I didn't answer, and I can answer it right now, is Mr. Harki's about the sign. I might as well answer that right now, so. And if, Lee, if you have any other ones, please, you know, I know I've always, I've communicated by calling you, or you can submit me any ones that are unanswered, and I'll either call you and answer it or not answer it. But when it comes to the sign, I know Mr. Harki has brought up the sign, we have on there, please support your local businesses. I think that's as far as, how I feel, as far as I think we should go. We have a very diverse workforce in businesses in our community. So to advertise for one, or even just say patronize that one, you gotta advertise for others, okay? Where do you start? Where do you begin on that? Okay? One thing I don't wanna do is pit the village, one business against another. It'd be one of the worst things we can do. Have a, let's say, a perception that we favor one over another, that could be, so I think the best way is what we have, please support your local businesses. If council or, and I don't even know if it would be legal to do it any other way, that sign out there is a public sign owned by all of us in this room here. It's public funds that support that sign, and it's a fine line, so that would be something. I, right now, as the administrator, am not gonna add any more to that sign than what you see. I think we do a great job supporting local events. Mr. Harki asked about putting the race car on there, you know, his Sunday event, which is an event for anybody that lives in the village, so it's certainly being used the right way. And we've never asked before, so when you did ask, we went along with it. So to make that clear, if anybody thinks, anybody was asked and we didn't oblige, well, that's not the truth. When it comes to those businesses like that, or a women's club or anything, the Lake Club, Citizens League, if they asked to put something on there, we're very good. We just have to, you know, we wanna do the right thing. What we don't wanna do is ever, you know, offend anybody. And I know the intention is good, so I don't want you to think, but sometimes how we look at things, we have to look at the legal side of it and just have to look at the big picture. So that's where I stand now with that. Lee, if there's any other questions, feel free to contact me.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I would like to say, too, in regards to emails, I have five different email accounts, and I don't get to them every day. I can't when I'm at work, so that takes a couple of days out of it. I do try to get to them at least three times a week, and sometimes on Sundays, as Mr. Harki knows, I told him I completely unplug, and that's family time. But I will respond to you. If there's an email that was sent to another council member and I was copied on it, I guess I would ask that you make sure to tell me that you want me to answer, because otherwise I view that as, I'm just being included to know what's going on with that email or that conversation, so.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Mr. Harki's been asking me for an answer on the sign, and I agree with you, Mr. Mayor, is that we cannot single out any one business here, because this is for the entire village. My answers, when I do answers, are usually short, sweet, to the point, because I've had answers misconstrued, so I try and keep it right to the point. So I think is with the mayor, what we've done is just saying, you know, we support our businesses, and that's probably as detailed as we can get legally.
And, you know, with that said, that one of the most important things is if we, as a body, we have to be very careful, we have to abide by the Open Meetings Act. If we talk about certain things, even in an email trail, or agree upon things, and don't do that in an open meeting, we can be in violation, okay? And you, we listened tonight to Mr. Hickey about that, believe it or not, the village has had lawsuits, people claiming we, not this body here, but other bodies, have violated some of the Open Meetings Acts, and have even had to go down to Columbus. So there's a lot of sensitivity out there when it comes to emails and conversations and stuff, and it's just what we were just talking about earlier. So really, one of the best forums is right here, or anything, because then it's there, it's in an open, it's in an open meeting, and it's one of the best forums for us, really, and, you know, so.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
As you said, that is like the safest way because of sunshine laws for us, because once something is in an email to us, it is public record.
Right.
So that's how it can get misconstrued, you know, and why, like, if it's addressed to one council person, I don't wanna answer, because that can be seen as a violation of sunshine laws. But in person, definitively. But I understand and appreciate, Mr. Harki, that you include others to make them aware of what's going on. And I do understand your reasoning for that, it's just that's the part where we struggle in trying to answer.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I believe I said it at the candidates' night, there are many, many things that the people want us to do, and I always think, we always have the law that seems to, comes into play. It seems so easy that we could do this, but when we find out, no, the law says this, the law says that. So, you know, we have to confer with our law director on things. I was just asked the question tonight, that apparently there's a sign in a yard, and it's profanity in there, too. And they said, well, you know, what do we do about things like that? And I says, you know, freedom of speech, you know, people say these things, but we just can't go and change things. It's nice that we can go up to this person, because I've seen it before, and we say to that owner, would you please take that down? And they have. But it's so difficult, as our law director can tell you, with people, they put things in their yard, and, you know, that's, they're prerogative, they like whatever they're putting in their yard as a Mickey Mouse or whatever in there, you know? That's their right, freedom of expression. So a lot of things that people think are so easy to do, we have to look to see, well, you know? For businesses, maybe there's three businesses in town, restaurants, and we start mentioning one, and the other two say, well, you know, our business has dropped off, because, you know, you're saying this, and people are going there. So we have to be very careful for what we do, because sue, 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 Mr. Hickey was just here, how many lawsuits? It's very easy to get into that, and we don't wanna get into that. And I believe what the mayor has said, support our businesses, all our businesses, and I think that's the way to go, and I think that should make everybody happy, all the businesses, we're not taking one out above the other. Thank you.
Any other comments?
No. Don't forget what was outside, we need to...
Yes, I understand. Any comments from residents? Come on up to the mic, Ken.
What I was asking for was not to turn the marquee into an advertising platform, but I was asking for, and I said in my message that I knew it had never done before, it was simply welcome a new business to our village, and I suggested that from now on, we welcome all new businesses to our village, just to recognize that new business. I understand that it's sensitive, somebody could say, well, you didn't do it for me, or you didn't do it for me, and that's a difficult balancing act. The only thing I was trying to accomplish was to make it look like something positive is happening, hey, we got a new business in the village, welcome to our new business. Put it up there for a few days. I know that it never was meant to be an advertising platform, and I wasn't suggesting that at all. It was just simply, hey, welcome to a new business, and from now on, I suggested in my message that we welcome any new business that comes into our village. To me, that's a bit of a celebration, actually, when somebody new comes in, whether it's a restaurant, or retail store, we're not gonna have that, but a commercial business as well. So if you decide not to do that, then so be it. But I wanna clear what my intentions were, it was simply to welcome a new business to our village. It's the newest one, the guy's been working really hard, and I just thought it was a good idea. If you don't agree with that, then so be it. Thank you. In the meantime, thank you all for your consideration. Whatever your decision is, thank you for your consideration.
It's there. I never took it negative, and there was nothing negative to take about it. So I didn't take it that way, and I fully understood what you said. But even welcoming a new business is part of advertising a business. So my, what I said earlier would be worded the same way, so I wouldn't change that. So I feel the same way, whether it's welcoming it or not. I think the most important thing is for us to patronize them, patronize them, so.
Yeah.
I think that's great, and I agree with you. It's nice to see a nice business over there. Can't wait till the doors open fully, and we can all go inside and have a nice dinner along with the other businesses, restaurants we have in place, so.
And if anyone wants a reference on the place, I've patronized them three times. The food is excellent. Don't be afraid to order some good Italian food.
And word of mouth is probably the best patronage we can give them, actually. I do have one more comment.
Okay, one more comment, then we're gonna adjourn, because I understand.
Okay, so the last comment from Lee Nielsen, again, that says, I'm asking about simple responses, like a thank you, can I call you back, come to COW? She wasn't looking about policy decision, just that simple acknowledgement of the email from what I'm interpreting, or the phone call.
If I may, I'll comment to Ms. Nielsen. Yeah, it's just incumbent on us as soon as we can, I mean, to receive an email, and we can respond, or a phone call, we respond. I will say I have been guilty of not getting it out as soon as I, as quickly, some of my return messages, but it should be as soon as we, as reasonably can to respond. That's our responsibility, whether it's an email, a call, or a text, or Facebook message, or whatever it is. People contact me all kind of ways in this village, and I respond by any means necessary.
Any other comments? Okay? I have a motion for adjournment.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion for adjournment of the committee of the whole meeting.
Circle.
Before you adjourn, I have a comment.
Yes.
This Monday, we had a 50-plus club meeting across the way, and we had 57 people there, plus we had five, I know that they were ill and they couldn't make it. That was a record crowd we ever had, you know? And the only, only part that didn't work out well was the microphone. And that has been an issue over there for I don't know how long. If we can look into that and see the microphone, if you tapped it, you could hear that noise, but nothing came out, or it was like...
Yeah, that mic's not working, actually, we probably should've given you that heads up. George, actually, our mechanic is good with electronics and speakers, too, so...
That's where our microphone went, I was looking for it today.
Yeah, so basically, yeah, so that system needs to be fixed in there, so I apologize. I'll make a note of that to remind Rob.
Yeah, because it was, it crackled, we couldn't hear anything, so.
Yeah, absolutely.
And we got a lot of new members.
Great.
Signed up, too, so.
That's great.
I just wanna see the 50-plus club, it's doing well, and it's nice to know that the people are coming out again.
Very good.
Rob Cowan said, bad amplifier, we're working on it on that microphone, thanks.
Any other comments? Motion for adjournment?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion for adjournment of the committee of the whole.
Circle.
Councilwoman Allen?
Yes.
Councilwoman Brenner Miller?
Yes.
Councilman Linville?
Yes.
Councilman Spitznagle?
Yes.
Councilman Whedon?
Yes.
Councilwoman Turlosky?
Yes.
Okay, meeting adjourned at 8:34 PM. Okay. We'll go right into our regular council meeting. Okay, we'll get some housekeeping things out of the way before we get to the important business here. Okay, pledge of allegiance?
Call the orders.
Call the orders first.
Call the orders right now?
Yeah, we're gonna say...
I can do roll call after that.
That's fine.
Here we go. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'd like to take, I'll wait till everybody sits down a minute. I'd like to take, I'll wait till everybody sits down a minute. I'd like to have a moment of silence for our deceased residents. Jeannie Williamson. Fred Obreza. Ed Pollak. And Betty Lozaro. Thank you, everybody. Roll call.
Councilwoman Allen.
Here.
Councilwoman Brenner Miller.
Here.
Councilman Linville.
Present.
Councilman Spitznagle.
Here.
Councilman Whedon.
Here.
Councilwoman Turlowski.
Here.
All council present, along with our fiscal officer, Angela Rovey, and our law director, John Montello. Next item, any persons having business before council. That's a good thing because if everybody had something, we'd never get this. Most important part done here. Okay, item six. We're all here this evening besides to do council work, also for a proclamation for K nine Officer Arrow. Our deceased police dog who, um, we lost this year. We are here tonight. Chief, are, do we want to start with our proclamation or with something? Okay, very good. So what we did, we got, I know the village, we have a proclamation here. We're going to start with Councilwoman Allen. Everybody, I'll read the top and then I guess we'll start with me. What's that? No, that's okay. I, we'll pass it around, that works too. So we have a proclamation here tonight for Officer, uh, Arrow. Whereas honoring K nine Officer Arrow for twelve years of dedication and service to the citizens of the Village of Walton Hills as a member of the Walton Hills Police Department. K nine Officer Arrow was a black German shepherd who was born on February third, two thousand and eight, and was imported from Europe. He was trained in narcotics detect, detection and patrol areas of obedience, agility, tracking, article search, area building search, and handler protection. I'm going to pass this down. Danny, if you want to read the next person.
The first whereas, the first whereas down there.
Whereas Arrow became an officer with the Village of Walton Hills Police Department in May of two thousand nine and.
Whereas Arrow earned the designation of a certified police K nine tracking dog in June two thousand nine and. Whereas Arrow gave uncompromising dedication to his handler, Sergeant Mike Jervasi, for eleven of his twelve years with the department and.
Whereas Arrow's age and health issues made it difficult for him to continue to meet the demands of the police K nine, of a police K nine and.
Whereas Arrow retired from the Walton Hills Police Department on June five, twenty twenty-one.
Now therefore, I, Don Colgarap.
No.
Yeah, that's your line.
Go ahead, go ahead, you can, I, I was going to, yeah, you were, he was going to pass it back. Yeah, let me pass it back, so, because we must, somebody must have written one more too. Now therefore, I, Don Colgarap, there in the Village of Walton Hills, Ohio, do hereby express my gratitude to K nine Officer Arrow for having faithfully served on the Village of Walton Hills Police Force for twelve years. In witness hereof, I, I have hereon to set my hand and cause the seal of the Village of Walton Hills, Ohio, to be affixed this nineteenth day of October, twenty twenty-one. We'd like to present this to Mike Jervasi and his family. Uh, as you know, Mike was Arrow's, we'll say, best friend, father, um, and officer, uh, who stood by his side. Chief, I, you want to proceed with what? You and your officers?
Hey, Mary. What happened to Steve Davis?
Steve, yeah. Steve. Steve Davis.
The agreement adopted by K nine Officer, dated June fifth, twenty twenty-one, hereby the Village of Walton Hills, the K nine Officer, who was handler for adoption. The agreement is attached to this relationship hereby, for exact, exact due age on behalf of the Village of Walton Hills. The Village hereby commends K nine Officer Arrow for his spiritual service in Walton Hills. K nine Officer Arrow, who retired after twelve years of Walton Hills Police Department. K nine Officer Arrow, who retired November four, not February third, two thousand eight, for his former career, who was trained in narcotics retention and parole, with parole and area of obedience, agility, track, article search. Area of obedience and handler protection. Arrow's first handler was Officer Joe Mark, who was trained by Bannister, bringing all five K nine Excel services incorporated in May, two thousand nine, certified in June, two thousand nine. In February of two thousand ten, Officer Mark, of Walton Hills Police Department, for the Walton Hills Police Department, at this time, started a new survey between Arrow's second handler, both were recertified with all Johnsons. The average work life for a K nine is about six years. Arrow was truly earned the time off, loves to play ball. He will have plenty of time to enjoy his career, Sergeant, for his experience. Thank you, Arrow, for the loyal service for Walton Hills Police Department. Another one, in remembrance of Officer K nine Arrow, trusted partner and friend, who was highly respected by our officer and will be truly better. End of watch, June four, twenty twenty-one, presented to Sergeant, by all of us.
I won't read this, but this is the exact same.
Putting the police department, remember Arrow. Erica? One more, Mike, stand.
Chief?
Yes.
Would it be inappropriate for that to be on the wall with the other police chiefs?
That's, that'd be great.
Yeah, you can put it up there. Put it wherever you feel fit. Oh, how nice.
All the officers just have, those are the officers, uh, this year, and have to make the, uh, Officer Kelly, who was hereby.
Wow. How pretty.
Looks nice, Mike.
That is, that's really nice. Does anybody want to say anything? I mean, in.
It's hard to talk.
No, Mike, you're fine, but does anybody else want to say anything? I, I know as mayor, I hear all the time, I know Mr. Liquor says he misses Arrow when you come in and, and see him and stuff, so. There's a memory here that will never go away. And I think it's wonderful that you guys and everybody and everybody here is, you know, so supportive.
Hey, Mayor, if, if I may, uh, I've got a German shepherd right now and those are the most loyal dogs that you will ever find. They're just so protective and just watching over things and, and keeping track of everything. It's incredible how, how smart those dogs are, so, thank you, Mayor.
Does anybody else have any? Mike, we just want to say thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, you were the other half of him and, uh, what more can we say? You know, I guess it's like anything, any, any relationship and, and that's what you had there. You know, the, the, the dog is only as good as the trainer or the, the trainer's only as good as the dog. And that certainly was a reflection of Arrow and you. So I just want to thank you on behalf of the residents and the Village of Walton Hills. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor. Sergeant Jervasi, we were very lucky to have Arrow, but he was very lucky to have you and your family too.
Great job, Mike.
Chief, did you want, every, did anyone want to say anything or?
Thank you to everybody for coming and I don't like being a family. Thank you, thank you, council mayor.
Thank you to his family because I know he was part of your family, Mike. Thank you, everybody.
You guys don't have to stay for the rest of the meeting.
What is the box I see?
That's Arrow.
That's Arrow.
That's the baby.
He's in the chair.
I was thinking that, but I wasn't exactly sure.
That's the baby.
So I get to pet him one last time without him looking at me and asking you if it's okay? His, his hair, his hair is up on his back, Mike.
Hey, great job, Mike. Great job, too.
Thanks, Mike.
The baby, you brought the baby.
What's in the box?
Oh, we were so cute. Gorgeous picture of him.
Yeah.
I have the pictures on my, on his retirement party, I can't get rid of them.
Um, yeah, we probably should get some of you.
If you sign, take as many pictures as you want.
No, we gotta, we gotta vote for legislation.
Hey, Mayor, are we going to have another K nine here?
We haven't talked about it yet. Yeah, we can get out of the way here. Yeah, I just want some nice pictures for the sheriff, so. Chief, you did, your officers are your office, I see everything. They all, yeah, because a lot of them had a, a couple of them had to come back in tomorrow at four A M., so they're heading home to go to bed. Father. Father, yes.
You might, I see it up close. Look at him, like cold black. What a beautiful dog.
Do you want, here, let me come.
Yes.
I bet you guys have some good stories. Yeah, Mike just had a kid just crawl over.
Danny, you got a watch, you want a watch?
Thank you. Thank you, Mike.
Nice plaque. Hey, Mike, I got a puppy too. Got that big. Huh? I got a little dog and a little puppy.
In here, just check my phone and see.
So photogenic, maybe he could have been.
That's my son, my best girl.
Photogenic?
I just got a tattoo.
Yeah.
But he looks like he's at attention, you know.
Okay, talk about, now we can talk about it.
Thank you for being patient too. You know, Mike, when you have something, it always goes along, right? But it's.
Hi, hi, we're good.
Thank you, guys.
I still want to speak now that we're back rolling.
I'll see you tomorrow. Uh-oh. No spending, we got a roads to fix.
Yeah, always on a Monday, third Monday. Yeah, it'll be a few months, you know, down the road, yes. Appreciate it, yeah. Yeah, thank you, yeah, thank you.
Yeah. Still live, keep that in mind. Still live.
Good night, thank you, John.
Thank you, everyone. About what's in the box? Yeah, I agree, I agree on that, not gonna lie. Okay, we're still live, we'll, we'll laugh about that later. It's like three shakes of red.
Nice seeing you.
Thanks, Brianna.
Yeah.
Okay.
What, Jack in the Box?
Oh, Mayor, Mayor.
We are still, we are still streaming.
We are streaming. Woo, somebody's mic is too close to something or another.
Okay.
Okay, we are.
All right, back to business. You're on item number seven.
Just again, I just want to say what it, you know, it, I, I'm glad, Mike, and we took some time there. Just so, but I, I don't think it changed much, you know, your feelings to your, your animals are just, they become like a part of the family, so. I got the mayor's report here. Okay, I'd like to read into the record. Okay. We'll do the police report first. For the month of September, twenty twenty-one, the Walton Hills Police Department issued. For the month of September twenty twenty one, the Walton Hills Police Department issued one hundred and sixty-five citations in the month of September. The predominant violation was expired plates with forty-six citations, followed by thirty written for speed and seven citations for tinted windows. There were two arrests for driving while under the influence of alcohol and drugs. Be nice if that was at zero, but two is better than someone's. Okay. Got the mayor's court report. The total revenue for the month of September was twenty-eight thousand, five hundred and eighty-one dollars and ninety-five cents. Year-to-date, it's two hundred and nine thousand, seven hundred and forty-dollar, seven hundred and forty-nine dollars and twenty-one cents. Last year-to-date was a hundred and forty-two thousand, nine hundred and sixty-eight dollars and twelve cents.
Mr. Manza, could you give the year-to-date again?
The year-to-date was two thousand and nine, seven hundred and forty-nine dollars and twenty-one cents.
Thank you.
And then last year-to-date was a hundred and forty-two thousand, nine six eight point one two. And you got a current period, everybody go with the current period. Okay. So as you can see, those revenues are up. Thank you. Okay. Any comments from council?
Uh, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
There was, um, two things I wanted to mention. Last week, we started streaming with our new camera, our new system. We had, I had a resident contact me. I contacted Councilman Spitznagle because I knew he was looking into, the possibility of us being able to stream our meetings ourselves and what kind of cost that, that would incur. We were paying just under eleven hundred dollars per meeting, and a very hearty thank you to Sorin Buddha, who helped us so much with this setup, and it cost us just under a hundred and forty-seven dollars total. And there will be no recurring costs after that. So I would really appreciate Sorin for all of his help that he gave Brian and me in the many meetings where he explained everything to us. Mark from the Service Department that so quickly got the camera hooked up for us, so we were able to use it. I'm just grateful for everybody and that we were able to do this at such a greatly reduced cost for the village. One other thing that I have is, it was pointed out to me at one of the meetings when we had passed some legislation for rural drive. Comments that I made were, could have been misconstrued, that I was throwing Rob Coleman under the bus. I was not in any way, and I want to apologize to Rob if he thought that, or it sounded that way. It was not, it was, it was Rob being the driving force, actually, and, and getting that project started and pulling all of the different pieces together, to be able to come to a conclusion with what needed to be done, and I'm very grateful to Rob for that. Thank you.
Okay, any other council comments? I want to say thank you, um, to Jennifer Allen and Brian Spitznagle, and of course, our resident, for working on that. As you know, we use CARES money to pay for the other meetings, that we've mandated to do, and when you approached us, I thought that was a great idea, and I'm thankful for that, and we're, we're saving money, so that's a good thing. And we're doing both. So we, we stayed moving forward, um, we came back, and, um, the residents still can watch it from their house or their car. Or where? As long as they got some kind of device either in their hand, or on their lap, or on their desk, so, thank you for that. Any other comments from council? If not, I'll move anything from. Then we'll move on to the legislation. Item A, who would like to introduce that for suspension?
Mr. Mayor, I would like to introduce for suspension Resolution twenty twenty-one dash nineteen. A resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with the city of Cleveland to participate in the operation of the road system installed and maintained by Motorola Solutions Incorporated for the purchase of APX Enhanced seven hundred, eight hundred megahertz radios for the police, police department and for dispatch in the village of Walton Hills, Ohio, and declaring an emergency.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Spitznagle? Vote on suspension?
Councilwoman Allen?
Yes.
Councilwoman Brenner Miller?
Yes.
Councilman Lindville?
Yes.
Councilman Spitznagle?
Yes.
Councilman Whedon?
Yes.
Councilwoman Trulowski?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to ask for adoption of Resolution two thousand twenty-one dash nineteen.
Is there a second?
Second.
I got Mary first.
Second, Mary?
Councilwoman Allen?
Yes.
Councilwoman Brenner Miller?
Yes.
Councilman Lindville?
Yes.
Councilman Spitznagle?
Yes.
Councilman Whedon?
Yes.
Councilwoman Trulowski?
Yes.
Okay. Resolution twenty twenty-one dash nineteen passes. Thank you, everybody. Item B?
Mayor Colgraf?
Yes.
Members of council, um, I'm introducing Resolution, uh, number twenty twenty-one dash twenty, uh, for suspension. Uh, a resolution authorizing the mayor and clerk of the village of Walton Hills to enter into an agreement with the HCC Public Risk Ohio DBA Tokyo Marine through the Love Insurance Agency for a municipal package insurance program effective November one, twenty twenty-one through October thirty-one, twenty twenty-two, and declaring an emergency.
Second.
Second on a suspension?
Councilwoman Allen?
Yes.
Councilwoman Brenner Miller?
Yes.
Councilman Lindville?
Yes.
Councilman Spitznagle?
Yes.
Councilman Whedon?
Yes.
Councilwoman Trulowski?
Yes.
Suspension passed.
Okay, I hope I do this right. Mayor Colgraf, members of council, I'd like to introduce Resolution number twenty twenty-one, uh, for, uh, for actual adoption with an amendment to, uh, paragraph two, or whereas two. Uh, the new, uh, the new wording should read, whereas council has determined it is in the best interest of the village of Walton Hills to enter to an agreement for the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two casualty insurance coverage to be provided by HCC Public Risk Ohio DBA Tokyo Marine through the Love Insurance Agency.
So we gotta vote on the amendment, correct?
Oh, yes.
Or vote on the legislation?
I would just vote on the legislation.
Okay.
Second.
Second by Jennifer Allen?
Councilwoman Allen?
Yes.
Councilwoman Brenner Miller?
Yes.
Councilman Lindville?
Yes.
Councilman Spitznagle?
Yes.
Councilman Whedon?
Yes.
Councilwoman Trulowski?
Yes.
Resolution twenty-one dash twenty passes, uh, with the amendment. Okay.
Okay.
Item C, ordinance twenty twenty-one dash seventeen.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to introduce for suspension, ordinance twenty twenty-one dash seventeen, authorizing the issuance of notes in the amount of not to exceed three million, seven hundred and ninety thousand in anticipation of the issuance of bonds for the purpose of, one, constructing and installing road improvements comprising the Sagamore Road Reconstruction Project, including all necessary appurtenances thereto. Two, constructing and installing road and traffic signalization improvements comprising Alexander Road slash Northfield Road Improvement Project, including all necessary appurtenances thereto. Three, constructing and installing road and traffic signalization improvements comprising the Alexander Road slash Dunham Road Improvement Project, including all necessary appurtenances thereto, and, four, acquiring, renovating, and equipping a building for municipal purposes and retiring notes previously issued for such purpose, including all necessary appurtenances thereto, and, five, constructing and installing road improvements comprising the Dunham Road Reconstruction Project, including all necessary appurtenances, approving related matters, and declaring an emergency.
Is there a second on the suspension?
Second.
Second by Brian Spitznagle?
Councilwoman Allen?
Yes.
Councilwoman Brenner Miller?
Yes.
Councilman Lindville?
Yes.
Councilman Spitznagle?
Yes.
Councilman Whedon?
Yes.
Councilwoman Trulowski?
Yes.
Suspension passed.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to ask for adoption of ordinance twenty twenty-one dash twelve, notes for funding.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Lindville?
Councilwoman Allen?
Yes.
Councilwoman Brenner Miller?
Yes.
Councilman Lindville?
Yes.
Councilman Spitznagle?
Yes.
Councilman Whedon?
Yes.
Councilwoman Trulowski?
Yes.
Okay, ordinance twenty twenty-one dash seventeen passed, six oh, thank you, everybody. We have old and new business. I think, um, I know we talked about, um, a motion to cancel the November second, uh, meeting due to the election, something we normally do, um, for that Tuesday. I think that's important to a lot of us. I don't see why, why we couldn't do that. We have the following week for COW meeting. Always have a COW meeting with our council. Uh, we do have a COW meeting we're probably gonna have with the council meeting, hopefully, you know, uh, this week, next week coming up. So I think we'd be fine if somebody wanted to make that motion, and we have it on record. Unless you want to wait till next week if we have that meeting, but since it's a regular meeting, get it out of the way, it's up to you. I'll, we just need a motion.
Mayor Colgraf?
Yes.
My time in order, I'd like to offer a motion that we would, uh, cancel the November second council, uh, committee of the whole meeting.
Second.
Second by Gloria? Vote on the motion?
Councilwoman Allen?
Yes.
Councilwoman Brenner Miller?
Yes.
Councilman Lindville?
Yes.
Councilman Spitznagle?
Yes.
Councilman Whedon?
Yes.
Councilwoman Trulowski?
Yes.
Okay, that meeting is canceled. I think that's the only thing I have for, uh, old and new business. The other thing I guess we need to discuss, I don't know if you want to do it right now before we adjourn, is about scheduling next week's meeting, but, you know, why don't everybody look at their calendars, I know, and see what day works best next week. Angela, one for some, I think for you to be here is important, but I know you got a tough week.
I cannot be here Wednesday or Friday.
Okay.
Any other day I can make work.
Okay, and Brian can't be here Monday or Tuesday. So how does Thursday, is, was Thursday tough for you, or was Wednesday?
Thursday's okay.
For Jennifer?
Wednesday would be just.
Denny, Mary, I mean, we're thinking about having a meeting Thursday.
That's fine.
Okay, Gloria, Ray, if they make it work. Okay. So why don't we say seven o'clock? Is everybody good with that? Right now, we say seven o'clock for, or would you rather go a little earlier? What's hard for you, seven?
Earlier would be hard.
Earlier is hard for you than seven? Seven okay for everybody?
No.
Thursday, okay, then let's say.
Wait, is this Thursday?
Next.
Next Thursday.
Okay, I was gonna say we didn't. Twenty eighth, okay. Yes, I'm, I'm good.
And that way, um, we get some of these questions answered. Any questions you have, or anything related to that, you know, give them to Angela, or myself, or whoever you think, Joe, whoever.
Are you calling a COW or a special meeting, what are you calling?
I think, should, I think we should have a COW with a special meeting. Should we set it up that way? Okay.
Twenty eighth.
Yes.
Twenty eighth. Thank you. Oh, we gotta do one more thing.
Yeah, let me, actually, can I chime in? Because I know everybody's been waiting for budget stuff, so obviously, five hundred other things going on here. I'm, I'm like right there for your August numbers. If you give me like another day or so while I'm doing the OML conference online, I'm gonna close my door, so nobody comes in, and I'm not gonna answer the phone, so I can get everything through September. It would be my suggestion to do a finance committee meeting as well, like I still need to meet with my department halves, so we can get a picture of where we're at, but also it's that time of year to start getting some ideas of needs in the departments. Um, and I've been, been doing a little bit of due diligence on, on the, uh, vehicles and things like that. So I just want to throw that out there, because I know I keep waiting, and then I keep getting interrupted, so, um, so, yeah, I do apologize, but if, you know, in case we want to do that within the meeting, or however we want to do it, I'll get you stuff ahead of. Um, if you want a separate finance committee meeting, whatever works. If you want to do it COW, whatever you think.
Well, this we do know, since you're getting, that's gonna be important for our meeting next Thursday, because it's gonna be related to how it affects the budget.
And hopefully, I have a check from the county by then as well, if it helps, so.
Okay. Well, why don't we do, and, and as much as we have for that, we'll put, uh, a finance, we'll put finance in the committee of the whole.
Okay.
And then, we'll definitely, the first, will be the second COW meeting in November, we'll make that a priority to have, talk about the finances and everything in that meeting. Anybody else have anything for old or new business that they want to share before we? No, I, I think I was good. You're right, did you have something, Diane, or no?
Diane Kenzoni, one eight eight one seven, Alexander Road. I just wanted, when we were talking before about roads and the roof. The downfall of most buildings, homes, garages, everything has a roof leak. And this afternoon, it sounded like the roof has been a problem since two thousand and sixteen. You're gonna have more and more problems. If there's mold, deterioration, rotting, whatever's up there, so I really would consider you guys really putting that as a priority. I know it's gonna cost a lot of money, and if you can't get the supplies right away, it's just gonna get worse. So I really high, highly recommend, that roof's gotta get in the budget somehow. But that was it, that's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Uh, Rob Coleman did say that two thousand and sixteen was the last time it was brought up to council. So it's been longer than that. But in two thousand and sixteen, he said in the infrastructure meeting that he brought it up back then, that the roof was going to need to be replaced. And at that time, they were already finding saturated insulation in there, so.
Okay, any other comments? Have a motion for adjournment?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion for adjournment of the regular council meeting of October nineteenth, twenty twenty-one.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mary already seconded? Yep.
She beat you to the draw.
Somebody wants, somebody wants to leave Mary. Councilwoman Allen?
Yes.
Councilwoman Brenner Miller?
Yes.
Councilman Lindville?
Yes.
Councilman Spitznagle?
Yes.
Councilman Whedon?
Yes.
Councilwoman Trulowski?
Meeting adjourned at nine twelve. Thank you, everybody. Have a good week, good weekend coming up.